Good morning. Welcome to the August 5th zoning hearing. We have quite a bit on our agenda today in a full house. So we will, before I call the meeting to order, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then proceed from there.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in its courts, liberty and justice for
Thank you. And at this time, 9:02, we'll call our meeting to order. I'll turn it over to Mr. Peterson to get us started with the agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When the case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked come forward to be sworn in. The applicant would testify first, and then the opposition, if anyone, would testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case or concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the Planning Commission will start to discuss the case in hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. At that point, the Planning Commission will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are some cases on today's printed agenda which have continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z2 of 2024, Florenori Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the September 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z9 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the September 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z9 of 2025 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z17 of 2025, Little Sunshine's Playhouse. This case was continued by the staff until the September 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z17 of 2025 will not be heard today. And finally, resounding case Z18 of 2025, Race Track Inc. This case was continued by the staff until the September 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing. Madam Chair and Board, I did get a request late last week to continue one of the case, and the board would need to vote on this case. But the applicant for Z15 of 2025, Sydney Silva and Amber Silva, they request their case be continued so they could consult with an engineer regarding some aspects of their application. So the staff would ask the board to continue Z15, 2025, until your September 2nd Planning Commission zoning hearing.
All right. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dance, as this is District 3.
My preference would be to hear the update on that, so I would not move to continue that case.
Okay. All right. And before we begin the hearing, I would like to make a couple more announcements. For the folks here in attendance, please turn your cell phones off. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board under discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, ready to start the agenda since there is no consent First case we're going to hear today is resounding case Z14 of 2025, Mike Heck requests a rezoning from GC and NS to NRC for a neighborhood retail and specialty contractor's office in Land Lot 296 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Dewest Road, northwest of Burn Hickory Road, and at the terminus of Burn Hickory Way. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z14 of 2025? Let the record show that there's no one opposed.
For the record, my name is Parks, Office of Law Firm, Samz Larkin-Hough, and I represent Mr. Heck in relation to this rezoning application before this morning. I will kind of go through a brief presentation since I had a full presentation last time, and then try to come up, bring us forward from that presentation. But just to remind you, this is a almost four-acre piece of property on Dewest Road in the Dewest Community. It's on an arterial road, and the land use plan has this entire section as a neighborhood activity center, meaning that it is an area that you anticipate neighborhood uses that serve the surrounding community. Ironically, the location is the Can Trail Convenience Store that was built in 1950 and has continued to serve the community, most recently as Farmer John's Produce Stand. So the property, and it's that family that is selling the property today. And you can see from the aerial all the activity that's gone on there. Ironically, I looked at the aerial yesterday, just kind of orienting myself. I live in the area, very familiar with the area, but nothing new has been built in this Dewest Community since 2009, which seems like it was yesterday, but it's actually, you know, 16 years ago. And so a lot has happened, but nothing new has been built in this area. And so it's an opportunity to bring some new development to the area and bring uses that will serve the community. As a note here, Farmer John's is on the property now. It's been part of the community for, I think, around 20-something years, providing fresh produce to the community. But also note that there's other uses in the area, such a lot more intensive uses like Unwind, which is a great restaurant, Meredith Pizza Company. And just for comparison's sake, if you look at that property to the north with the two buildings, that's the same acreage that we have, and that's roughly 40,000 square feet of retail. We are less than half that with the same-sized piece of property. Just to give you context, this is a fairly low-intensity use. This is the original site plan that the staff reviewed. And after we had a community meeting where we met with all the community members, one of the things that had come out was the desire to keep the Farmer John's. And so this is the revised site plan showing the Farmer John's building remaining. Again, it was built in 1950. The current tenant in there runs a fruit stand, vegetable stand, and it would remain as it is right now with the intent that it remains as a similar use going forward. The current tenant would like to stay there, and we certainly would like to make that happen. So this is the revised site plan showing that building. In the back is a office building that is designed for my client who lives down Aqua Dewest Road, grew up in the area. His main office is in Cartersville, but he would like an office that he can use close to home. It also has a shop and storage space in this building that's designed for him. This is the, we were asked to come forward with some architecture. This is the architecture for the proposed butcher shop that we mentioned. And as you can see from the site plan here, this is on your left-hand side, building number one is what that is. Obviously, the orientation is slightly different. It's showing a 5,000-square-foot building that's long. The intent right now is a, rather than multi-tenant, it's going to be a single-tenant use, which is a butcher shop. And so it shortens the width, and it's a little deeper, so it doesn't totally match up with the site plan. But again, it's a concept site plan. Your staff reviewed it. Their analysis is recommend approval subject to final site plan approval, and that's going to be designed for that specific tenant, so what they need. And this is the architecture, just giving you, what you asked for last time was architectural renderings to show you what it would look like. This is the office building that's in the back. Again, to orient you, this is the building number two. It sits behind the Farmer John's, and there's a grade change from right to left, where it drops off on the left-hand side. You can see the drive to the storage shop area underneath. That's to the left, and I'll kind of pick you up on that. So that long building there is, this is the front that's facing kind of to the side, and then the long part is there would be facing the back of Farmer John's. This is the other side where I mentioned you have the fall with the land. So that driveway that comes around, that's a, and I think I fully understand it now. This is a two-story height, but it's actually one story. It's just a higher roof elevation in there. So it's all one-level building, just higher roof in that back part. And again, where you have some entrance for some storage and minor shop stuff. Again, we've agreed to, this is a contracting business, but this is an estimating shop. It's not a place where they have any contracting trucks or anything like that. And we've totally agreed, no outdoor storage of any equipment or anything like that related to this business. And this is another angle, again, showing the front kind of facing the side, and that long section is what's behind Farmer John's. I mentioned last time that traffic-wise, by revising the site plan, keeping the Farmer John's building as a smaller 3,200-square-foot footprint, this actually reduces the amount of traffic in the area. Your staff has recommended approval of this application. We had a community meeting with over 20 people in attendance, and I think they're comfortable with it and the fact that they're not here and have expressed support for it. We have submitted a letter, revised stipulation letter, July 30th. Wanted to go over a couple things that I've included in that. And paragraph number eight, I think there was some more details that might need to be fleshed out. The Farmer John's building, again, built in 1950, the current occupants have a current CO. They would like to remain in that building as is, and that is what we would like for them to do. We do anticipate that they will, at some point, either change uses or change tenants, in which case the building will go through a full remodel, if not rebuild, given the condition of it. If it needs to be rebuilt, it will be rebuilt in the footprint. But if it is heavily remodeled, we will comply with the current CO standards. And what I mean, I put then-current CO standards, and my point was doing that was to say whatever those standards were in the future is what we would be complying with. So if it needs to just say current standards, that's fine. And so that would be for that building to be either remodeled or maybe rebuilt if the foundation or something like that needs to, you know, isn't able to be repaired. So we think that we are addressing the concerns. We have architectural rendering showing the general architectural style of the properties and the uses. We also want, I want to point out too, I know there was a concern about outdoor storage for the produce stand, and I think that the, what the community is comfortable with is is that it be outdoor display of seasonal items as opposed to outdoor storage, where like you might store a bunch of wood that's just permanently stored because you don't have a place in the building. So it's outdoor displays. Again, so in pumpkin time, you're going to have pumpkins out there. Christmas time, you're going to have Christmas trees out there. During the regular season, when tomatoes are in, they have a display where you can, you drive by and you see the fresh tomatoes or the fresh cantaloupe. So outdoor display of seasonal items as opposed to outdoor storage for that produce stand. So I think we're hopefully addressing everything. Again, we really appreciate being able to meet with the community and work with them. And we ask that you follow your staff recommendation. And again, just to reiterate, this property is one of those properties that is owned GC and NS, which has no use under this Neighborhood Activity Center future land use category. I can complain that that shouldn't be the way the county handles these type situations, but it forces this property has to be zoned to a category that gives it a use and is conforming with the land use plan. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and we did not have opposition. Is that correct? So this is in District 1. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Beloyne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Parks?
I know. I started sitting down. I was like, why am I sitting there?
Why? Yeah. Just walking away. Okay. Let's talk about the entrance to the garage. Will that be where the driveway is shown going to it? So we could say on the northeast, I'm sorry, northwest side of the office shop building? Will that be the entrance?
Yeah. So that shows you right there the driveway that kind of goes to the side of the building. And again, that matches in with this doorway there on that side.
Okay. While we're on that, how high is that door?
The door is probably 20 feet. 12 feet? 12.
Just 12?
Yes.
Okay. So if we said not to exceed 14 feet, we'd be okay?
Yes.
I'm just trying to keep a look that's not
Yeah.
industrial here. Okay. And you're showing it as having some sort of architectural relief on it to make it appear something like just a plain metal door?
Yeah.
Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
That's okay?
Yes.
Tell me about the vehicles that are going to go in there, if you would, just so I can make sure we're not going to be creating a noise problem for the people that live in the three houses right behind that.
Yeah. And I think I put it in the letter that there are unmodified personal vehicles that is part of a personal collection, no work being done on them, no racing, no anything like that. I think y'all had a situation where someone was doing something like that, but this is unmodified collector, collectible cars that would be just stored in there.
In terms of the potential discontinuance at some point in the future of the Farmer John's business, could we agree that if it remains unused as a farmer's market for more than 10 days? Or do we need to put a longer time period on that? To trigger the bringing it up to the then-applicable code? Do you know, has there been any discontinuance in that business, seasonally or otherwise?
No. I mean, it's, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, it's operational all year long. Obviously, it has busier times than others. I mean, January and February, it's not that busy, but I think they still maintain regular hours. But certainly 90 days that it would be brought up to standards in 90 days if the tenant moves out.
I was going to go with 120.
Oh, that's better.
Well, contractors sometimes get busy. Okay. The architectural design of, you're fine with all those buildings being approved, final architectural renderings being approved by the district commissioner since we didn't have
Yes.
detailed architectural renderings?
Yes.
You're still fine with office building and retail buildings having consistent architectural themes, correct?
Correct.
One thing on your, on what's shown right here, you've got, it says 35-foot landscape buffer, and on point number 13 of your proposed dip letter, it says 20-foot landscape buffer, which?
That was taken from the staff analysis.
The 20-foot?
Yes.
Are you okay with a 30, keeping a 30-foot to the
Yes.
northeast side?
Yes, we're okay with a 30-foot buffer, increasing that from 20 to 30.
Thank you. Those were all my questions. If my fellow commissioners have questions, please.
I just wanted to clarify that the side entry garage, the long entry, is not a loading dock?
No.
Okay.
No. It's simply about that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Get in.
Any additional questions from commissioners? Okay.
And John, just to make sure I've covered it, is there anything else staff recommends beyond what's in the proposed letter of July 30th that I need to?
No, I believe Parks's letter covers all 12 things in the staff recommendation.
Okay. And so the recommendation is to subject to these stipulations and subject to any other staff comments?
Correct.
In the event these stipulations conflict with staff comments, is there any concern about, any conflicts there?
No, sir.
Okay. Just make it subject to both. All right. So bear with me. I'll have a little longer motion than most folks would like, but let me give it a try. The motion is to recommend approval of the request subject to all staff comments and subject to the letter and agreeable stipulations of July 30th, 2025, with these agreed modifications as discussed today. As to paragraph number eight, beginning at the third sentence with the word "when," I'll just go ahead and read the rest of the paragraph from there as it will be rewritten. Upon any discontinuance of Farmer John's business as a farmer's market for more than 10 days, the building will be brought up to then-current standards for a new certificate of occupancy. A major renovation or rebuilding of this building to meet the then-current CO standards will be done consistently with the architectural themes of the attached renderings. As long as the Farmer John's building remains a vegetable stand, outdoor storage of produce will be allowed. Additionally, storage of Christmas trees, fruits, vegetables, flowers, plants, and other seasonal items outside will be allowed, but otherwise, there will be no outdoor storage Paragraph 11 should be modified to read, "The architectural design of all buildings, including the Farmer John's building and including its doors, shall be approved by the district commissioner." Number 12 will be modified to read, "The office building and retail building will have a consistent architectural theme substantially as presented visually to the Planning Commission on August 5, 2025." Stipulation 13 will be modified to provide that the, after the first two sentences there, a third sentence will say, "There will be an enhanced landscape buffer of 35 feet," I'm sorry, "of 30 feet on the northeast boundary." And then a stipulation 17 should read, "An overhead door not to exceed 14 feet high is to be located on the northwest side of the building." It'll have architectural detail to be approved by the district commissioner, consistent with the renderings shown. The side entry is, this side entry is not to be used as a loading dock. And my request and motion would further be that we place this on the consent agenda at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a second?
Second for the purposes of discussion.
All right. We have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion?
I just had a question for, just clarifying for Commissioner Beloyne. So the current site plan already has the landscape buffer of 30 feet, so we're just, that stipulation is just affirming that? Okay. And then?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then for the discontinuation for 10 days, I just wanted to kind of understand how that footed with the recommendation for the 90-day, or actually the 120-day opportunity to bring it up to standards.
Some, my thought would be it's 10 continuous days of no operation as a farmer's market, which triggered the obligation to then bring the building up to code within 120 days.
I guess our only practical concern with that would be that 10 days seems a really short time period. Just, so I, from, so I mean, I would just be of the mindset to probably start with a minimum of 30 days. Usually, you have lease language that allows for provisions that manage that, but I think that's specific to the lease as opposed to what we're looking to provide here.
Well, I'm fine with that, and I'm sure the applicant is. So I'll move to amend my motion to change that trigger time from 10 to 30 days.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Those were all my comments.
Sorry. The motion has been amended. We still need a second. Would that be correct, based on the amended motion? I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Massey. Call the question. One more. Can you, Commissioner Dance? All right. Thank you so much. And the vote passes 5 to 0 for Z14, 2025. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next case is resounding case Z15 of 2025, Sydney Silva and Amber Silva. Request rezoning from LRO to NRC for a flooring showroom in Land Lots 310 and 339 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southwest corner of Shallowford Road and Shallow Court. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z15, Sydney Silva and Amber Silva? Is there anyone here opposed to this case?
Madam Chair and Board, the applicant is not present, and there's no one here opposed to it.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Dance. I believe this is District 3. Any additional comments or discussion on your part?
Mr. Peterson, do you have any insight as to whether or not they were told that they would get a continuance, and that's why they're not present?
They were not told they were going to get a continuance.
Can, can we hold this now and allow somebody to call and see if they plan to come?
Sure.
So just based on that, we don't have to have a All right, so just based on that, we don't have to have a motion or anything to hold it, right? We're just going to allow staff to reach out and you'll follow up, is that correct?
To put it on, not to hold? The motion would be delayed on the table, I believe, and we'll bring it off the table and put it back on the agenda if they show up or a disposition is required from the Planning Commission.
Excuse me, is there a need to, to put it on the table, is there a need?
There needs to be a motion and a second to vote to do that, and then to remove it later, to add it back to the agenda for today.
Okay, all right. I entertain a motion to do just that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Massey to table Z15. And to further, we'll, we'll get further information from our staff, and then we will remove it from the table later in the, the meeting if needed. Call the question? And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, next case is LUP 19 of 2025. Lionel Salas, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows and to allow inaccessible structure to be used as a dwelling unit in land lot 207 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Tatum Street, west of Olive Springs Road. Is the applicant present? I direct to show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 19? Let's direct to show there's no one, there's no one here to oppose it.
All right, welcome. State your name for the record, and you can begin your testimony, sir.
Yes, my name is Felipe Manuel Martinez. First time in this hearing. I know I'm the owner of the property of 53 Taylor Street. My tenants, they require for a permit and park more vehicles. The existing driveway, there's driveway on the right and the left of the property. And I really don't know anything about what happened before. So, I work with Charles, Code Enforcement Department. We walked through all the property, and I'm just here to see what you guys decide.
All right, thank you. Anything additional you want to share with us? All right, there is no opposition. At this time, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Anderson for, to lead the discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, yes, great, thank you. So, I'm gonna just have eventually Code Enforcement come up, just to kind of give us a little bit of an update on it. But last time we spoke, I, I think your tenant was here. And the request at that time was for a total of six cars to be parked at the house. And the code allows up to three cars on site. And so, a couple of questions that we had from last time was, it, there was a, appeared to be a, another individual living in the house separately, at the, I think at the rear of the, of the house. Is that individual still there? Can you talk about what's, is there any relationship to you or to that tenant?
There is no relationship with the tenant. There is nobody living at the moment at the place. I walked through Charles with the code form, he, he took the pictures, and I think, sending probably to you guys, but it's a place we just added a small shower, and I have it like, you know, when someone come to visit, they can stay there for a couple of days, but there, but nobody's living there.
Okay, so you can confirm there's no lease in place for someone to occupy that space?
That's correct.
Okay, but there is a lease in place for the individual who came earlier?
The house, yes.
Can you, how long has that lease been in place?
The lease for the tenants has been over a year, it's like a year and a half right now.
Okay, how much time is remaining on the lease?
Six months.
Six months is remaining, okay. Got it, all right. And then, has your tenant spoken with you about the parking situation? And have their ability to reduce the number of cars that, right now you have three more than what are allowed? So, have there been any discussions with the tenant about either working with a neighbor to park some, the cars there, or getting rid of some of the cars? Have you helped, can you tell me kind of what solutions you guys have talked about?
There is a right side of the house where he parked three cars, and the left side is extended driveway, goes all the way back to the storage. Then, that's where they parked the other three cars. That's, far as I know, I mean, like, there are no parks, there are no cars parking on the street or vehicles blocking other neighbors'
Okay. All right, great. And then, the kind of staff recommendation here, there was from, and I'll confirm this with the Department of Transportation, but I think there was a comment there that our recommendation that one of the driveways be closed. And so, I'll, I'll talk with them and give them an opportunity to explain kind of the reasoning behind that, but I just wanted to, were you aware that that was part of a recommendation, if this were to be approved, that one of those driveways be closed?
Both of the driveways, they, actually the house in the front has a fence, so both of them have a, they're closed on the, with the gates.
Okay, I think I could see the shadow of the fence on it. It's the one on the right, right?
The one on the right and the one on the left.
Okay. But it actually, it's a little hard to see, does, does does that have actual, like, a driveway, like a concrete apron that goes into it? Okay.
You can probably see better on Google Maps.
Okay, all right. Great. Those are the questions I had for you for now, and I'll, I'll call up some other staff members, but I wanted to see if any of my other fellow commissioners had any questions they wanted to ask of the applicant right now.
I mean, just, just to follow up on his question, have, have you had conversations with the tenants about reducing the number of vehicles on the property?
Yes, I mean, like I said, the, the only thing that I'm here is they decide to get a permit for those vehicles. So I told them, I mean, if, you know, it is possible to reduce the number, there's, basically that's, his wife is the one, she has like three vehicles. So, I don't know how they driving or they driving, of course, most of the time, there are two vehicles parked the whole time on the driveway or three, and the other ones were moving. But I mean, of course, what I hear from Charles, Code Enforcement, he say, it can be as many vehicles as you want during the day, because we don't check it during the day. They go through the night, that's where the vehicles, they're big parked right there, and that's what it counts. So, I, I told them, and I mean, like, they're, they're two brothers, and him, and they say, we, we have to use those vehicles, so. We, I mean, that's, that's all I know. They, they used to work, and she's the one use the other three vehicles.
So, in total, how, how many people are in the residence?
There, there are two, they're a couple, couple married people and kids under 18, three.
Okay, but you said two brothers and a wife? Is that what you said?
No, that's, that's only one, I mean, his wife and his brother. That's only three adults. Yeah. And I said two kids or three under 18, probably two, they're, they're young guys.
And, and just for my information, does your lease address the number of vehicles allowed on the property?
My, well-
Does your lease with the tenants address the number of vehicles that are permitted on the property?
No, no.
Great, thank you. I think those are the questions we have for now, so you, you can take a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And then, can I kindly call, call Code Enforcement up?
Good morning. Yolisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Morning, Yolisa. Can you walk us through the kind of latest update from, from the staff on the initial complaint and how any items that were initially cited that have since now, since your last update, been resolved?
Okay, so we received a complaint on February 3rd of 2025 in regards to single-family dwelling. The property is allowed to have three adults and three vehicles parked outside of the garage or carport majority of the week. The officer went to the property and issued a notice of violation for single-family dwelling on February 3rd, 2025. And he spoke with the property owner and was advised that four people were living there. And there were three related adults there. And he was also stated that they have four vehicles. We placed a case on early morning inspections to monitor the amount of, of vehicles at the property. Early morning inspections were conducted in May. It's a two-week investigation. And at the end of the investigation, they were found in violation of single-family dwelling. Majority of the week, there are six vehicles at the property. So, on June 6th of 2025, the officer issued a citation for single-family dwelling, which had a court date of July 10th, and the fine was paid. And currently, the property is pretty much still in violation of having too many vehicles. So, right now, we seize enforcement until a decision is made whether or not the LUP will be granted or not.
Excellent, thank you. And, and in terms of the, the occupancy, at any point, is there any current violation on occupancy standards at this time?
Well, based off the amount of vehicles, that, that probably lines up with the occupancy. But they were in violation of the amount of adults they had, because in February, it was stated that they had four, four adults. They only allowed three. So as of right now, I'm not sure what the true number of adults that live in the house and what the relationship is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other questions from my fellow commissioners?
I just had one question. Do you know what triggered the initial complaint? Was it the cars, the number of cars, or was it noise? Any other violations that maybe triggered the complaint from other neighbors?
It had to be the amount of cars, because when a complaint was put in, it was an anonymous complaint, and the description was just single-family dwelling. So, what triggers a complaint for single-family dwelling, most of the time, is when they see too many vehicles. Or if they see like a ton of non-related adults.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Okay, Lisa, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And can I call up DOT?
Wilson Collins, Cobb County Department of Transportation.
Hi, Wilson. Wilson, there, I think there was, I guess I'm not, I have to look carefully, because I'm not used to seeing on LUPs DOT recommendations, but is this, I think there was language around recommendation to have the second access point closed, and I just wanted to understand, does that recommend, is that recommendation still hold here? Is that just something that if it were, yeah, I guess can you talk a little bit about whether, how binding of a recommendation would that be, given that there's already a fenced area? And if that were just converted to a straight fence as opposed to a gate, would that satisfy that condition?
So long as the property wasn't redeveloped to impact the driveway or trigger a land disturbance permit, we wouldn't, DOT would not require the modification to remove that second driveway, sir.
Okay, great, that's, that's what I thought. So if we were to approve this, though, it might be, there's no law, land disturbance, so there's nothing to trigger that. Okay, great. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, great, thank you. Can I have the applicant come back up one more time, really quickly? I just had one last thing. Yes, yes. One, one thing I forgot to ask earlier is, is this your first tenant that has been in this building?
Yes.
Okay, so you've basically had this rental operation in there for about a year and a half?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and it's only, and you said only six months remain on this lease?
Yeah, I mean, they renew like every 12 months, so I mean, there are six more months for them to renew.
Okay, so they have not renewed for yet?
Not yet, not yet for this situation.
Okay. But, so it is possible as part of any renewal to incorporate language, requiring any caps on the number of cars and on the number of occupants?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. So, I think at this time, I'd, you know, be prepared to make a motion. And I think for, for this situation, my, first of all, my goal is to really strict, to stick, you know, not displace the, the current tenant prior to that six-month period, but also reflect that we are, you know, there needs to be less cars there. And so, my, my recommendation would be to approve for six months the, the LUP. And I, but, but subject to the number of cars being capped, capped at three cars. I would encourage the tenant, the landlord to speak with their tenant about potentially making arrangements with the neighbors, if they are so inclined. But I would, yeah, so the motion would be to cap three cars. It sounded like there are three, and I think four adults, and that's really just to reflect the existing kind of composition of the house. And this would be for six months, just to kind of align it with the term of the lease. And at that, so my motion would be to approval, subject to the three-car cap, the four adults currently in the house, and a six-month time limit. John had some input on that.
And just one question, Commissioner Anderson. This was also for allowing them to use a shed as a dwelling unit? Is that part of the approval, too?
That would not be allowed.
Okay, so we probably need to add to the motion that the shed not be used as a dwelling unit?
Thank you, yeah, and shed to not be used as a dwelling unit. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a second?
A second for the purposes of discussion.
We have a second from Commissioner Dance. Discussion, please.
I'm, I'm not clear on your motion when you say to approve it. How many vehicles are you approving it for?
Three.
Three currently?
Three is the cap at any point during this six-month period.
Okay, okay. So, no six?
No, they're gonna have to find accommodations for, the tenant's gonna have to find a way to either get rid of, or maybe find a shared accommodation with a neighbor who is amenable to it.
Okay, and is the, we don't know about this extra person in the house, but are you saying if there is a fourth person in the house- But are you saying if there is a fourth person in the house, because he's only preference three adults? If there is a fourth, you're allowing that to continue for the six-month period?
Yeah, I'm matching it just to, because there's a six-month lease in place.
Status quo.
And, yes, so, but the intention of that specifically is not to allow this to perpetuate. And I wouldn't want it, you know, we, we did hear from the tenant last time and who spoke about kind of their existing conditions. So I think this part gives them an opportunity to serve out the remainder of the lease while removing the car situation, which I think is a little bit more flexible than moving the family and, you know, reducing the count. I think it's easier to reduce cars than people. So I did want to make some accommodation for that for people, the current household. But then really kind of stick, stick to, I think they should probably work with the landlord to provide some solutions around not having as many cars kind of piled up there, just given the visual disturbance that causes to the neighbor.
And, and work with code enforcement as well?
Yes, so this, yes, exactly. So we can add that stipulation. I think in the past, we've had a stipulation where there's maybe like a three-month check-in or just to confirm adherence.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, let's call the question. It's okay. All right, passes five to zero for approval of LUP 19 with the stipulations addressed by Commissioner Anderson. Thank you so much.
Okay, next case is LUP 24 of 2025. Brandon Lorenzo requests a temporary land use permit to allow occupancy of an accessory structure and to allow one extra vehicle in Land Lot 1100 of the 19th District. Property is located on the southwest corner of Janet Way and Hyrum Lithia Springs Road. Is the applicant present? The record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 24? The record shows no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So I'm here again. Same thing, just about the vehicles. And we managed to rearrange for the storage unit. Will no longer be used as a living dwelling unit. We will just keep it as a storage. But since I have electricity in there, I'm just waiting on my cousin. Because my cousin did my electric work, he has a license. So I'm just waiting for him to get back to Mexico so I can go ahead and get the permit and get it to pass inspection. And we can just keep it as a unit.
Okay. Any additional information about the other part of the, the case?
No, just hoping I can get approval.
Okay. All right, thank you. And if you could state your name, if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brandon Lorenzo, and I live in 4943 Janet Way, Portis Springs, Georgia.
All right, thank you, Brandon. All right, this is in District Four. We'll turn over to Commissioner Massey to lead our discussions. We do not have opposition, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you so much.
Good morning, Brandon, how are you?
Good, good.
So I just wanted to re-clarify for purposes of today's hearing that you have how many people living in the home? How many cars on the property? I know that your request was for the accessory structure, which you've now just confirmed will be just storage, not a living dwelling facility, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so if you could clarify for us and tell us again, how many people are living in the home? And how many vehicles are parked at the property?
Okay, so during, I'm just gonna base off what Mr. Martinez had said that what mattered was that people at night, not during the day. Because most of the day park will probably be three cars parked in the property at most. But at nighttime, I believe for a total of eight or nine cars. Because we all come back from work. Because I have, in my house, we're all siblings. My parents and my grandfather is a multi-generational. I think that's what we would say. So, and we're all living together, so that's why we have so many cars.
Okay. And the number of cars is nine? And I believe the last time we also spoke, there were also two additional people in the home that are potential drivers that are not yet, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and can you also tell me how many cars? Who is driving which cars? Because I believe your father was driving a work truck, another vehicle, and another vehicle, correct? So, or?
He was driving two. His personal vehicle and his work truck. Then my mom is driving, I would say more like her daily vehicle, you know, to go like grocery shopping and stuff like that. And then when she goes out with my younger sisters, she has another vehicle for that. And then I have my daily vehicle, which is the little Honda that was parked outside at first. And, but I passed it on to one of my sisters because they wanted to get her a new car. But I told her that, no, because we're not allowed. We're already having a hard time with the cars that we have currently. And if we add an extra car, this will be too, too many cars. So I just passed her my Honda Civic. And right now I only have, which is just my work truck. And then my grandfather drives his own vehicle to go to work. And my younger sister, she has, the one that's after me, she has her personal vehicle for work and then her vehicle to go out on trips, you know. She says she likes going on trips and having her own car for her trips. So that's where we're currently at.
Will that conclude your testimony?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, if you will have a seat, I'm gonna have code enforcement come up so that I can ask some questions, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good morning, Yelisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning, Ms. Foster, how are you? Thank you for helping us out today. I just wanted to ask a few questions about this particular. Can you give us an update about how this came, how this code enforcement came to survey this property? What has been the findings? And just kind of give us more information about this particular.
We received a complaint February 17th of 2025 in regards to seven to eight cars at the property, a trailer, two storage building with people living inside of it. The officer went out on February 18th and issued a notice of violation for single family dwelling and parking standards. When the officer arrived, there were two vehicles that were parked on the grass or the dirt. And they also observed three sheds in the back. We couldn't tell if somebody was living in there or not. So once they issued a notice, we did do early morning inspections to see how many vehicles is at the property. That was done for two weeks in April. At the end of the early morning inspections, it was found that the property was in violation. Majority of the week, they have eight vehicles. So no citation was issued because the tenant applied for a LUP. So we are awaiting the decision here.
Thank you very much. Also, are you aware, are you able to tell us, based on this property, how many residents per square foot we're supposed to have? Or how many, what's the maximum allowed? And if you are not, John, if you are able to chime in?
They're allowed to have five adults and five vehicles, but only four can be parked outside of the garage or carport majority of the week.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
And I do have a photo of what the officer caught early morning of the vehicles. I'm not sure if y'all can see that on y'all end. Gotcha.
Yes, it's up, it's up for us now, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions or concerns that they would like to raise before I place a motion? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to actually deny LUP 24 for the accessory structure and also for the number of vehicles parked. I would message to the applicant, it seems as if you guys have access to quite a few luxury vehicles that you can kind of trade in and out of. And it might be advised that you and your family look for an alternative parking source to park some of your vehicles, another place that you can actually store that. But as the code stands, we want to ensure that we honor it. It's too many residents in the home and too many cars parked on the driveway. So my motion is to deny the request as it stands.
Thank you, Commissioner, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Dance. Any discussion?
One, one question, just to clarify, Commissioner Massey. The, so the denial would be, would also deny the six adults living, like the one extra person on the property?
So I don't want to reduce the house size, but I definitely want to address the cars. I don't know that I can remove the, the parties. And it has, they have an additional person. But I will say that we will deny the request for the vehicles, which is the vehicles and the accessory structure.
Okay. And I guess also then with the ADU not being acquired, occupied right now, I guess the, the, we can even ask the applicant again. Did the applicant say that there were still six people total in the house?
He did. He indicated that there are.
Got it, all right. Sorry, Ms. that, thank you.
No worries.
Appreciate you helping me fill in that gap.
Right, I just wanted to clarify. So, so it sounds like we are staying with the six adults or six people in the property. But we are denying the request for the additional cars. So that puts us at five vehicles.
Correct.
They would have to get down to five.
Yes.
And then I think the storage structure was also part of the original application.
Which is also denied, that can only be used as a storage unit. No commercial, no residential use.
Which I think they would, they've made comments towards that. But John, you have comments as well?
To kind of clean this up just a little bit. I think we need to make a motion to approve the six for 12 or 24 months and then deny the accessory structure and the number of cars.
Let me amend my motion. I amend my motion to allow for the six physical bodies in the, in the structure, deny the request for the accessory structure, that no commercial or residential usage, and also deny the increase in the number of allowable vehicles.
Is that for 12 or 24?
And that will be for 12 months.
All right, we have a new motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Blowing. Any additional discussion? All right, call the question. Okay, and the motion goes for, based on stipulations from Commissioner Massey, and that is LUP 24.
Okay. Is the applicant still here? Just make sure he's back for, in two weeks from Board of Commissioners. All right, thank you. All right. Next case is LUP 25 of 2025. Luciana Ooyama requests a temporary land use permit to allow a dog grooming business in Land Lots 54 and 55 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Lexford Court, southwest of Hickory Grove Road. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 25? The record shows there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
All right, welcome. State your name for the record and then you can go ahead and share your, your comments, please.
Thank you. My name is Luciana Ooyama. And I'm gonna read again because I got a little nervous, sorry. So, thank you for giving me this time to speak. My name is Luciana, and I'm asking for a temporary land use permit to run a small dog grooming business from my garage. I have been a dog groomer for more than five years. I love working with animals and giving them a calm and personal care. In the past, I worked in busy salons with a lot of noise and pressure. It was hard for me and stressful for the dogs. That's why I want to work from home in a quiet and peaceful space. I understand that you have concerns about the traffic. So I like to explain how I keep simple and quiet. I will send only, I will see only three dogs a day, five days a week, by appointment only. Each appointment is spaced one hour apart, so only one calls.